I'd like to reconvene to open session at 9:08. Let's move on to item G, public hearings, roll call vote, there are none tonight. So let's move on to item H, Board of Director items, H1, Board Member Reports Training, A, there was none, B, Community Activities and Media Reports. Director Yearwood.
Let's see, kind of a light month, I went to the Cordova Community Tree Lighting back on the 29th, another great event, the fireworks were spectacular. I think everybody was there, but it was so dark, I didn't see most of you. So again, another great event. Then I headed out to Breakfast with Santa on the December 5th, another great event, a lot of people go to, so. I didn't get a picture with Santa, like, yeah, Director Chair, Vice Chair Sloan got a picture with Santa and Mrs. Santa, so, but that was a really nice event, really well run, pancakes were delicious and hot, so. And then I also attended the special board meeting about the potential options for financing on December 8th, a lot of great information on that, so, that was very informative. I also had an RCA meeting there, but I left it off there, so I'll let Mr., or Vice Chair Sloan talk about that.
Great. Director Reyes.
I attended the, also the Cordova Community Tree Lighting on the 29th, and it really looked good, and there were people, but I did hear from other people that attended it, because I didn't get to attend it last year, that it seemed like the numbers were a little less, I don't know why, maybe it was very cold, it was a very cold night. There was, I did bump into Director Sloan, who had lost his badge, so anyway, we tried to look for it, but we couldn't find it. But the thing, I just had a concern over the bounce house, and I mean, is this the community council, this is not run by the park?
It's Cordova Community Council.
I was a little concerned about the bounce house, because it was dark, it was really dark, I mean, lights out, dark. There was not even lights outside, and the kids were in the bounce house bouncing, I mean, you literally couldn't even see them, so I was a little concerned about that, maybe they should have put some lights around or so, or they probably needed to close the bounce house, but that's the only thing I felt I was concerned about, and obviously, it was not for our, not run by our, us, just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. The other thing is, I did attend the Salmon Falls Ribbon Cutting Ceremony, and wanted to command staff, it was great, and the partner, one of the partners with the water company, was very excited to be there, and have been able to have the opportunity to partner. I'm wondering if there is a way, we, I know we, you know, it's a new park, it's nice and clean, and I know that because they've taken off some old trees and shrubberies, it's a lot safer and cleaner looking. I was wondering, were there going to be any native plants or something that would have a little bit of flower or color, or were there just trees? Or were some of them going to have some color later on, because they were just so...
Okay, some of those deciduous trees are actually ornamental flowering trees, they're chetalpas, and so they'll get pink flowers on them in the spring, so.
Okay, then, that's great, because it needed some color. The other thing is, the Superfund Holiday Party went very well, staff did a wonderful job, and the morale of our maintenance and all our other staff, the different departments was really good, they're doing a good job, they did, they working very hard, and I think that they felt kind of good to be in the same room and share, this is, this is a much better year than we've had in many years, so, that was good. The other thing I wanted to say was, the special board meeting I attended was very interesting, and I'm hoping and I'm looking forward to Mr. Goodell's report, or at least what, his recommendation, or options as to how and how we can make, not only it affect the pool, but shooting range, and other, other very important projects. I was very encouraged and enthused by the gentleman who came, and what the, the gentleman that was talking about the financing options and his experience and all that, so, let's see what he can come up with. That's it.
Great, thank you Director Reyes. Secretary Lambrou.
Yes, I attended the Superfund Holiday Party, and I thought it was great, and everybody looked like they liked each other, it was, you know, they got along, it was a nice event. There was this rather outgoing young man in the Maintenance Department who, when I started to walk by the table, said, "Just sit here." So I did, and then the look on his face when I was introduced as a director, he was like, "Oh no, what did I do?" Yeah, yeah, the conversation died for a few minutes, so that was kind of amusing, actually. I did get one Maintenance employee who thought we should improve the parking at Mather, just so, that was said to me, but it was a great party, and I think people really appreciated it, and I liked that everybody got something, and, you know, the recognition, that, I like the kind of recognition that is not a popularity contest, so, I thought the recognition to the staff there was appropriate, it was great. I also attended the special board meeting on district financing, and it was extremely interesting, you know, I learned stuff I didn't know about public financing, and I look forward to seeing how it all evolves with the projects.
Thank you Secretary Lambrou. Vice Chair Sloan.
Okay, I got a lot here. Let's start off with the, I attended the Breka Meeting, which was on November 24th, and I also attended the one that was last night. The one on the 24th, they didn't address any park issues, but last night, they did, and one of the issues that they addressed was the condition of the walkways out there with the asphalt, that is, it's all, it's pretty much, it's pretty, pretty bad, and there's a lot of tripping hazards, and I know we discussed this before about ADA, they're gonna go out there, they're gonna redo it, I guess where it ends and hits the sidewalk, the sidewalk's at a different level, so, there's a lot of tripping hazards out there, I don't think anyone has tripped or reported it yet, but, something I think we need to go out there and check, and if we need to, to either make a little patchwork for now, so no one does fall, we need to address it at least, and so I'm bringing that up to the district's attention right now. And I attended the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association on December 1st, I learned a lot about some guy named John the Tractor Guy, who's supposedly some...
Oh, John Moore.
Yeah, some, an older retired person who bought a tractor and looks for things to ride it on, is that, is that what I'm hearing? It's an expensive tractor, he's gotten, I understand that he's completed the fields out there at Mitchell, he's, they've rebuilt, they've rebuilt the backstops and fences, and they've, they've redone some irrigation systems out there, and added 150 yards of dirt, which I guess is a lot of dirt I'm hearing. Also, the rugby fields at Mills, and I understand that they mowed it very, very low and thatched it, so they're, because they're dealing with, and added 600 tons of dirt, can't imagine what that would look like, to fill in some of the vol holes, or the gopher holes, or things that they have over there, there were big mounds of them, so, hopefully they made those fields better. That's about it for, there's a big rugby tournament coming up January 30th, which is, I think the district should check it out, because it's a, it's, what's it called?
KFC.
Yeah, it's, it's a fun event, I mean, though it's not on our park, it's still a great event, it's recreation, and I enjoy going out there, it's people from all over the United States, even Hawaii, they come, it's at, in between...
It's Mills, Mills and Cordova's Fields.
Okay, and then on, I attended the Rancho, the Rosemont Community Association meeting on December 3rd, and although we didn't have any addresses for, for the park, they did make a comment and a compliment to Jim, they said that they really appreciated the visit out there, and that they're now approaching other people to give them other types of reports like that, like the school districts and all that kind of thing, so I think that was, they really do, they really appreciate the attention that they do get from us. And they're having an annual meeting, which is probably going to be in May, they haven't set the date yet, but. I attended the finance meeting on December 8th, yeah, that was, the numbers seem to be very good and economical, and, and something that I think we can easily deal with, and that's sort of like, to me, that's like, it's like, a big, big guy's, big person's thing, we're getting our own financing, you know, we can do it, we don't, we get, we can do it ourselves, right? So I think that's great. The next thing, the Salmon Falls opening, was, I thought that was a nice thing, that park is, is a, is gonna be beautiful, I think some of the shrubs, maybe there are some flowering shrubs in there, I don't know if you got Pink Indian Hawthorne or whatever, but there's, the area in the bark has some bushes in there, correct?
No, the plan did not call for bushes, but yeah...
Are we never gonna add any bushes in there, just the trees that, and...
Correct, but you gotta also imagine that the trees are gonna grow bigger and become canopy trees, and it'll be even better at that point.
Maybe bushes, if we had bushes, maybe that'd be places for feral cats to live, I guess, we don't want that. But okay, that's, I mean, I really, that was, and I, and I appreciated seeing it in the grapevine, the little coverage we had, and so that was nice, that, kudos for the marketing department. Breakfast with Santa, I went there, it was, I got there a little later than, than I usually got, you know, I haven't been there before, but it was, it was nice, and I got to whisper some sweet, my, my secret wish list to Mrs. Claus, and what else is there? The holiday party was fun, too, I think this, this time of year is always a fun time, and although my wife just had major surgery on her vertebraes, so she's in the hospital right now, and my mother-in-law's in the hospital, and my stepmother-in-law was in a major car accident, so, I told my, my stepfather to stay home. All right, that's it.
Thank you Vice Chair Sloan. My report, Cordova Community Council's Christmas Tree Lighting in the Village Green, or, you know, Village Green Park, I was the one responsible for making the tree go on, and making sure that the fireworks went off, so it was very, gave me a little bit different of a position this year than I've had over there before, but it was a good event, I saw some of the directors out there, it was cold, it definitely was cold that night. So, there was, there was that cold, cold night, then my next was the Salmon Falls Ribbon Cutting, another cold morning, but it was very nice to see all the Park Services people that were able to help, you know, build that park, and the staff along with them, I know that there were some great pictures taken, and I tried to hurry that, that ribbon cutting along as fast as I could, I still have one quicker, a couple of years ago, when it was 100-plus out, and we wanted to open a park, but, I get both extremes now, I guess, hot and cold, so. Breakfast with Santa, sat, sat and had breakfast with Director Yearwood and his, his wife, was a good event, I, it was nice to see, I, I had to stand in line quite a while, because there was that many people there to get, get my pancakes, but, it was a good event, I've always heard it's a good event, typically I'm out of town that weekend, so I can't make it, but I got a chance and I enjoyed it, something I'm definitely looking forward to next year. Super, Superfund Holiday Party, it's time for, time for staff to get together and, you know, reflect on what's, what's happened, and be a little silly, I think the first year that Administrator Roderick was here, they dressed him up as a Christmas tree, I still think I have pictures of that somewhere, do you remember that?
It was last year.
Was it last year? Oh, man, it was only a year ago.
Two years ago, two years ago.
Two years ago.
It'd been the second year here.
So, but, I was, I was thoroughly impressed, I think we had two, two employees that were 35 years, so, I mean, we, and those were both in Park Services, so, you know, it was great to see Ms. Jones finally hit her five-year mark, seems like she's, she's been controlling us, in, in the sense of making sure that our paperwork's all, all out there for years, but it's only been, she's been here just a little longer than I have been, so, but it was another good event. Did attend the special board meeting of financing, as Secretary Lambrou said, I learned one of a lot of things about public financing that I had not heard bits and pieces here and there, but went, oh, that's how that works, because I had a lot of questions walking into that meeting, and afterwards, I was like, okay, now I understand that it's a little bit better, I still had some questions for, was able to do that, but, that is it for my report.
Brian, I have, I have one more thing to say.
Yes, yes, question.
I forgot to add this, this is twice I've witnessed a possible tripping problem at Capitol Village Park, where we, during the event, they have the light structures going up on, on both sides of the stage, where maybe before, they used to be back or on the stage, now they're on the ground, on the cement, and they have like these tripod legs coming out of it, metal, black, it's very, I took a picture of it, I have it at home, it's very hard to see those, and people and kids walk back and forth on that stage all the time, and there is a major tripping hazard out there, so, I don't know if that's something that they can put a trash can, or a sandbag, something to make it more visible, but I, I think that next time we have an event out there, we should look at that, those tripod light holders. I think they just did it that, for the 60s or something show, or, and then this last time I saw it, did we change something out there? Our lighting system?
It's Cordova Community Council, it's not the Park District.
I was gonna ask.
It's, it's a production issue, and we'll make them aware that they need to kind of label their tripping handlers on stage, it's the best we can do, once again, they're contracted production, and they're contracted by the CCC, we can only make suggestions to them, luckily, their insurance covers any problems that we have, and unfortunately, that's been exercised in the past, but that's the way the whole process works.
Thank you. Let's move on to item H2, Clerk of the Board.
Thank you Chair Danzel, we have six items to get through on this section. Item H2A is to reappoint four current members, and appoint one new member to the Board of Directors of the Friends of Cordova Parks Incorporated Charitable Foundation, and on this item, I will turn it over to Recreation Manager Diane Robinson.
Okay, that time for appointing my friends again, as Jim likes to say. This is actually our, we just finished our second year with the full board, and it's going strong, it's a great board, everyone is passionate about what they're doing, we, the bylaws allow for five directors right now, and we have six people that are interested, so one is stepping down while a new person, Annie De Maria Norris is going, would like to step in, and, so that is the recommendation, is to reappoint four of my friends, and give me a new one for this next year.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I was just going to suggest that, because both in this and the PMR ID, I was wondering if we could make sure that when our Board of Directors, you know, the committed, the commitment they make, the time, the effort, that they don't go off without something that, you know, they, that acknowledges their time, because sometimes it moves so quickly, some people don't get re, or they say, "I can't do it anymore," but I really think we need to remember and acknowledge their service, their time, their dedication, however which way, staff would like us to do, whether it's a certificate or whatever, but, they need to know that we value their time. That's all.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I move the Board of Directors reappoint Andrew Malouf, Anthony Osuna, Glenn de Bliss, and Joyce Higdon, and appoint Annie De Maria Norris to the Friends of Cordova Parks, Inc. Board of Directors for uncompensated one-year terms expiring December 31, 2016.
I have a motion by Secretary Lambrou, do I hear...
Second.
Second by Director Reyes, roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye. Thank you, motion passes, let's move on to item B.
Ms. Robinson believes that the Friends Board is the best, but I believe that PMR ID is the best. Item H2B is to reappoint three existing members to the PMR ID Oversight Committee. As you know, Citizens Oversight Committee was created as part of the establishment of this assessment district, it has been meeting faithfully since October 2010, we have four current members whose terms expire December 31st of this year. Member David Long indicated that he will no longer be able to serve, so, we will have a vacancy in Zone C as of December 31st. And then Member Marilyn Hamm's term does not expire until December 31st, 2016, so what we're asking for is to reappoint three members, they have various commitments here, Sandy Hicks has indicated she's available for one-year term, Bonnie Dominey has indicated a two-year term, and Gary Vorse has indicated a two-year term, thank you.
So these will have to be three separate votes, Ms. Jones?
Three separate motions.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, do I hear a motion on item A1?
I, I move the Board of Directors reappoint Sandy Hicks, Rancho Cordova Zone A, to an uncompensated one-year term expiring December 31st, 2016.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Sloan, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Director Reyes, roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye. Motion passes. Item B.
I move the Board of Directors reappoint Bonnie Dominey, Larchmont Riviera East, Zone B, to an uncompensated two-year term expiring December 31, 2017.
I have a motion by Secretary Lambrou, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan, roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye. Motion passes, move on to item C. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, the, I move the Board of Directors reappoint Gary Vorse, Rosemont, Zone B, to an uncompensated two-year term expiring December 31st, 2017.
I have a motion by Director Yearwood, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Director Reyes, roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye. Motion passes, let's move on to item H2C.
Thank you Chair Danzel, item H2C is to nominate a member of the Board of Directors to serve on the Sacramento LAFCO Special District Advisory Committee, Office A, for a two-year unpaid term, and Adopt Resolution 15/16-36 supporting the nomination. The Special District Advisory Committee is comprised of 17 special districts, each serves a two-year uncompensated term, they meet on the 5th Tuesday of every month, there are currently seven seats vacant for Office A. The Subcommittee on Membership makes the final selection from the pool of nominees, and just a note here, that nomination by this board does not guarantee that selection will be made on the CDAC. I would like to make a recommendation to select or nominate an alternate for this item.
Thank you Ms. Jones. Currently, I hold this position, I would like to continue to hold this position, but that is up to the will of the Board, so, we, I think we need to split them up, we need to do a, the primary and then the alternate, Ms. Jones?
Yes, please.
May I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
When will the results of the election be known for the LAFCO Special District, what is it, Advisory Committee?
Sometime in January, is what I've been told.
The other one will be in January.
They, they've pushed it back, they pushed the vote back.
I did hear a rumor that they failed to get the ballots out to all the districts, actually.
We, we got ours, but, yeah, so...
I know one district that didn't get one. I'm just wondering, is it possible to delay this for a month, since it doesn't have to go in until January 22nd?
Ms. Jones?
That was sort of the idea behind appointing an alternate, in case it turned out that Chair Danzel was elected, then the alternate would take his place, or whoever's nominated.
I'm assuming you wouldn't submit the nomination until after the results of the election are known?
I can do with the Board's pleasure.
Well, because you wouldn't submit two names to them.
No.
I, I agree with Director Lineback, because we are supporting your, hopefully your, your success here, and so, if it's not due till the 22nd, don't we have our meeting in, on the 20th?
Yes ma'am.
Maybe that's when, I, you know, I agree.
So do I, I hear from the Board that we want to delay this vote until the January meeting? Do we need to vote on that, Ms. Jones? And that will be a roll call vote, correct? So do I hear a motion from the Board to delay this, this motion, or this agenda item till next month?
I would like to make a motion to move this item H2, the nomination, to a member of the Board of Directors to serve on the Sacramento LAFCO Special District Advisory Committee to the January 20th meeting.
I have a motion by Secretary Lambrou, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second by Director Reyes, roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye. Thank you, let's move on to item H2D.
Thank you Chair Danzel, item H2D is a policy amendment, adopt an amendment to District Policy Section 2, Board Procedures, Committees of the Board of Directors, in order to reestablish the two-by-two standing committee with the City of Rancho Cordova. And the background on this is that February of this year, the Board adopted an amendment to the policy pertaining to standing committees, at that time, the amendment removed the two-by-two with the city in lieu of having regular joint work sessions, however, scheduling full attendance of the Board and Council at these joint work sessions proved to be quite difficult, but the district and the city does understand the importance of having regular meetings and open communication between the agencies, so, we are moving forward with reestablishing the two-by-twos, this is a standing committee, and they will comply with the Brown Act by having a posted agenda. The proposed policy change is shown there for you, thank you.
Thank you Ms. Jones. Any discussion needed on this?
Prior...
Yes ma'am.
Chair Danzel, prior to, was it last year, when they, the City of Rancho Cordova, when we held off on it and tried to work towards joint session? Am I right?
Yeah, it was approximately, approximately a year ago.
Prior to that, they had it for, we had it actually, for many years, and it was, I mean, Mr. Garrison and myself, yourself, I mean, we had this, and, and the reason why we had to stop it, or hold off on it, was because we had a little bit of a difference in, in how we were supposed to treat the two-by-two. Our, our lawyers, right, our legal suggested that it be agendized, so that with that, the public would know what was being discussed, what was on the items, and I guess if that's the case, would it then be open to the public? If it's agendized?
It is open to the public with an agenda posted.
Okay, so anyway, at that time, I know the city was not interested in making it an agendized item, right? And so then, at that time, we, I know, we held off, because I was on that, the two-by-two at that point, we held off, and then we worked towards having the quarterly, which we did for four sessions, and then we haven't had it for how long? How long has it been?
I want to say close to 18 months.
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm glad it's going on, I'm glad it's agendized, and, because then it'll be, it's, there's a lot more clarity with the conversations, because at that time, the conversations and the relationships and all that was so much better.
Vice Chair Sloan?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Yeah, I agree.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I, I move the Board of Directors adopt the proposed amendment to District Policy Section 2, Board Procedures, Committees of the Board of Directors, allowing the CRPD and the City of Rancho Cordova... of Rancho Cordova Two-by-Two Standing Committee to be reestablished. Amen.
I hear a motion by Vice Chair Sloan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Director Yearwood. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye. Motion passes. Let's move on to item H2E.
Thank you, Chair Danzel. Item H2E is another policy amendment. It's to adopt amendments to District Policy Section 2, Board Procedures, Officers, to change Board Officer elections to December of each calendar year. Currently, the way the policy reads is that Board Officer elections take place in January. However, this leaves the chairperson not making committee appointments until February, which leaves us quite behind of our other agency partners for the committee schedule. So the proposal here is to move that to December, which would then allow committee appointments to take place in January. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any discussion? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move the Board of Directors adopt the proposed amendments to the District Policy Section 2, Board Procedures, Officers, to change Board Officer elections to December of each calendar year.
I have a motion by Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
And Chair Danzel?
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes. Let's move on to item H2F.
Thank you very much for approving that last item. Let me move on to item H2F, which to, is to elect the Board Officers for 2016. And these offices are for chairperson, vice chairperson, and secretary. Staff recommends that the Board of Directors nominate and elect each officer through separate motions. And as you heard, the policy was just changed, so this will now be done each December. The duties of each office is listed there for you, and there is no additional compensation for Board Officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Any discussion?
I would like to make a motion. If that's okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I know this is perhaps a little unusual, but I think there's a lot going on right now, and I think it is a wise choice to continue with the current leadership as it's set up. So I would like to nominate Director Danzel to serve as chairperson of the Board of Directors for an additional term of one year and until the election of his successor.
We have a motion on the floor by Secretary Lineback. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a friendly amendment? I guess this wouldn't be a friendly amendment. This would be a new, be a new motion.
It's been my experience that, and I know it's, it's unusual, and that's why I know you prefaced it as that, but that we work ourselves. It is not a must. However, respectfully, it is a process of passing the baton to the vice chair. So I'm having some challenges with this, with this motion. I have no, no, I remember when Director Garrison used to say, well, but that's the way we've always done it, and it's true. However, I have a little, we work ourselves towards it, and we work ourselves hard. And I hope that as a Board, we can support. Director Danzel, I definitely appreciate your leadership, and I hope that it'll still be with us, but I would like to make a friendly amendment.
This would be a new motion, ma'am.
Okay. The first motion failed.
Yes, ma'am. There was no second.
So I would like to nominate Director Sloan, Vice Chair Sloan, to the chair position for the year 2016.
I have a motion on the floor to appoint Vice Chair Sloan to the chairmanship of Cordova Recreation and Park District, reported directors by Director Reyes. Do I hear a second? I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye. Ms. Jones?
Not yet.
Ah, okay.
Congratulations, Director Sloan.
Vice Chair Sloan? Couple more minutes. Okay. On, on the nomination for vice chair, do I, do I hear a nomination?
Yeah. I would like to nominate Director Line, Secretary Lineback for vice chair.
I have a motion on the floor to appoint Secretary Lineback to the vice chair of Cordova Recreation and Park District.
I'll second it.
I have a second by Vice Chair Sloan. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye. Motion passes. The nomination for secretary of the Board. Do I hear a nomination?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll nominate Director Inez Reyes to serve as secretary of the Board of Directors for the term of one year and until the selection of her successor.
I have a motion on the floor for Director Reyes as secretary of the Board of Cordova Recreation and Park District by Director Yearwood. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
I have a second by Secretary Lineback. Roll call vote.
Director Yearwood?
Aye.
Director Reyes?
Aye.
Secretary Lineback?
Aye.
Vice Chair Sloan?
Aye.
Chair Danzel?
Aye.
You may now pass the gap rule.
Chair Sloan?
Congratulations, Chair Sloan.
I move this...
All right. Now where do we go from here?
You will be moving on to item I, Special Items.
Special Items. Hope you had to get back to this one.
Item I is Special Items. You have none this evening. Item J is comments by staff on non-agenda items leading into department head reports.
Okay. So we have department head reports, park services. Do they want to have, anybody have any questions for park services? You get to read through all the stuff?
I just had one comment or question. I think it might be a typo, but it mentions under irrigation that you worked with staff to turn off the drinking fountains throughout the district?
Yes, we did.
Turn off drinking fountains?
Yes, we did.
Is there a reason for that?
It is, especially when the temperatures were getting colder. We did not want the pipes to freeze above ground. I'm sorry?
Do you drain the pipes, then?
We just turned the water off at the base of the, of the fountains itself.
In New England, that wouldn't work.
Well, fortunately, here in California, the freezing, the frost line's pretty, pretty shallow, but if this is up in Michigan where I came from, we'd have to go down pretty deep to go ahead and turn off the water.
Okay.
Yeah, no problem.
May I ask, do you put a sign so that families or kids or people that, that go to the park will know that the drinking fountain is not working?
Uh, no, we don't.
I think, should we not? I mean, let them know? I, I think we should, because, I mean, if mothers came with their kids and all that, at least if they saw it, they'd be aware and, you know, be able to say, okay, well, next time we come, we've got to bring our, our water, rather than send the kid off and get to the fountain and there's no water.
Is it, is it just temporary, like just this, like February through February, or when do you?
Basically, once it started, warms up toward the end of January, early February, we turn them back on.
Have we ever had any problems before? Have we had the actual, the pipes freezing and cracking and?
It's just been my experience there that if, when we start to get temperatures and start getting frost out there, that we start having a tendency to go ahead and have water freezing. And so the other thing we have is that sometimes water valves on the fountains themselves overflow and will go ahead and cause ice conditions. But again, I'm speaking from Michigan experience. That's what I'm trying to prevent here within the parks during the winter weather.
I think, I think one of the things we might want to discuss is kind of revisiting that a little bit. We did actually have an issue a couple of years ago before Jerry came in where we had a fountain. We had extreme cold temperatures, then we did have some damage, and then we had leakage. It's rare in California, so we'll revisit that one and, and see what we can do.
Yeah. Jerry, anybody, I, I think we're going down the line here. Anybody else on, for, for Jerry?
I have a question about the restrooms at Village Green. So we, we have problems with people going, because it's so cold. I guess you're going in there and sleeping overnight.
What, what they're doing, we had barrel locks on the inside of the doors so that people could go ahead and lock, lock the doors. They have privacy to use the restroom during events and so forth. But what was happening was that at night, we had people that was actually sleeping there overnight. And we would come out there in the mornings to try to clean the restrooms. They'd still be locked up inside. So what we've done is we put deadbolt locks on the, the doors so that they can lock themselves inside, but that we can actually unlock from the outside. We had to do the same thing at, at White Rock, and we'll be doing the same thing at Stone Creek.
They know that, is it illegal? Is it, is a signage say that, you know, no overnight camping? I don't know. Or is this just people that are homeless that are looking for a place to, to warm up?
Uh, that's part of the reason, part of the reasons that we've seen that, but we've also seen some drug usage. People, not to get too vulgar about it, but they do mess up the restrooms pretty badly. And we were trying to make it available for the public.
I always thought that all of our restrooms, we did have the patrols go out and check those.
The standard operating procedures for the patrols is to be able to use the keys to unlock the doors, to make sure nobody has, or inside. They shout inside to see if anybody's there. If nobody's there, then they go ahead and secure the doors.
Okay.
Chair Sloan, I witnessed this when I was working on the Christmas tree, that there was some people that were basically living in, in there, and we happened to, it happened to be the same day that the police department came out and brought their mobile camera out there, and this couple, you could hear them fighting inside the, the restroom, because they'd been, they'd been there all day. The door was locked. I just assumed it hadn't been unlocked for the day, because I hadn't seen anybody go in or out. But they started shouting, and then it happened to be that the police officer who was there that day made them aware of that he was there and that they needed to move on, and they couldn't just stay in the bathroom to stay warm for the day with their dog and a young child and stuff like that, so. And they moved on very quickly once he told them who he was, and, but they, they, people are, people were with the old barrel locks. They were just locking themselves in and staying.
So, so they had the ability to lock it from the inside, and we couldn't unlock it from the outside? Is that what these barrel locks?
With the barrel locks are like the little slide locks you have on your doors. So you, I mean, unless you go ahead and really pry the door open, you'd have difficulty opening. So we, I gave instructions to take those barrel locks off, off of all the bathrooms, and we'll go ahead and bear the expense to put the deadbolt locks in. It's worked out quite well so far, particularly at White Rock. We needed that.
Are these are single-use bathrooms? Are they, one, one person at a time? Is that what they are?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Let's go on to B, which would be human resources. Any questions for Andrea? Don't, not seeing any? Go to Recreation. Diane Robinson? Any questions for Diane?
Yes.
We have questions.
Yes, Director, Chair Sloan. My only comment here was, and I did know, last time in our last meeting, I know that Ms. Calveri had given public comment and had mentioned about the, the van, about being one van down, and about the people that were not being able to access our senior center because of that. So I wanted to acknowledge that I was pleased to see that it was addressed, that research was done, that we know what is the situation, but that we also hopefully make sure that this has been communicated to Ms. Calveri, so that she's aware. She is, yes. Very important. That's all, because, you know, sometimes they don't understand exactly what's behind it, and, and to understand that it was Asian Community Center? Yes. That really took their van back. She's actually on the Senior Advisory Board, and she's at the senior center every day and in direct conversation with, with Heather, so she's very aware of what's going on. Wonderful. So I'm, I'm glad you were able to give us an update on that. You're welcome. Thank you.
I was, I was just reading about the Little Red Barn, and I think it's kind of nice that all that stuff was donated. Was it also painted by some of the?
It was painted. Go by and see.
By the students?
The students helped. We gave them the lower level items to do. We were not going to have the students climb on scaffolding.
Yeah.
But they did a great job. It looks nice out there.
I'd like to see some coverage on that, on that barn. I think, I think there could be a story there, and, because the history of it.
There's actually, one of the students is talking about doing his school project on giving it a little more information, and Becca Niles is working with Angie Lipanovich on doing that. The history.
Thank you.
Director Sloan? One other thing here, I just wanted to note on page 85, the Hide Out Teen Center, they received a donation from the Golden State Water Company of 500. That's wonderful. That's so good that we get businesses to support their, our youth in particular. I just wanted to make sure that with that money, that we know where it, it's set to buy equipment and all, transparency, and also for the Golden State Water Companies to know what that 500 bought. We'll let them know. Yep. Thank you. And let us know too, so we can thank them when we see, come across them. We'll get a letter out to them. Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions for Recreation? No, hearing none. Let's move on to Communications. Any questions for Communications? Once again, I did appreciate that, see the, the coverage on the Salmon Falls. That was nice. Nothing, nothing else on, how about Finance? And Matt's been sitting there very patiently, waiting to discuss the numbers. Questions for Matt? He stretches legs for nothing?
Yeah.
Come on, that's a long way to go.
No, I'm glad that the special board meeting went well. I thought it was very informative, too, and...
I think, Director Inez?
I was just finishing. I was going to ask you about the audit. I see that you're, you're, you're completing it?
Yeah, we're looking to complete it actually tomorrow, maybe Friday, to have a final draft on Monday.
So are we going to be receiving it at the next board meeting?
Yes, that is the goal.
And then explain any recommendations and how we're going to be working with any of them.
Right, that's going to play a big part in our ability to borrow. So that's why we want to push the audit a little quicker. And so our auditors are doing their job and, and so we're hoping to complete it Friday.
Looking good, okay.
Now Matt, what were you saying about the finance meeting?
Yeah, I'm glad it was informative. You know, it's very important to know what our, our options are and what's out there available to us. And, and when I found CSDA and, and it's just, it was a great, relatively cheap alternative for us to, to borrow funds and at an amazing rate at 2.75, 3%. So we just have to have clean audits for a long time and, and we have, it's a short history that we have of that. So we'll have to revisit our ability to do so, if not, then go the public route, so.
Okay. Thank you, any other questions for finance?
Well, as far as that's concerned, for financing purposes, you know, I know that earlier in the year, we cleaned up some of the funds so that, you know, what appeared to be a deficit, you know, was really just a matter of which fund center was carrying the cash, as it were. But is that going to affect our, get financing or will they look at the overall?
Yeah, the, the two, they, they look overall district-wide and then general fund is the one that they really take a look at. Because they understand that that's, that's the primary source that the repayment's going to be coming out of. And so our general fund, obviously the last seven years has been on the wrong side. And so this will be the second year where it's on the right side. And it's been trending the right way for the last four years. And so I'm hoping that, that, that's a positive when it comes to our credit rating and our ability to go the private route. Because we can get a lot cheaper way to go about it and a better discount terms and all that stuff, so. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for finance? Then we'll move on to, uh, thank you, Matt. Park Planning and Development and our own Laura Taylor.
I have a few. In regards to the Measure H and the Ranch Cordova Little League, there's a comment in here or a statement in here about them wanting to take on additional footprint, a footprint in Alstrom Park. Is that for like another field? What is it they're looking to do there or wanting to do there?
They're looking to do a very nice complex and they're seeing that they're going to require more square footage than what they have currently available at Cordova Lane. They haven't actually done any layouts, but they're anticipating that in order to provide that dream facility, that they may need to encroach upon the Alstrom Park if the district wishes to provide that additional footprint.
And when do we anticipate them kind of having that blueprint of what they want to do? Is that in here? Sorry about that.
I think that we'll be able to bring something to you in the end of January or middle of February. They're, they're targeting the startup of the Measure H funding request again in March. And so their goal is to determine if it's even feasible to build this Little League complex at Cordova Lane. And, and then if so, go for the next phase of funding to complete that project and the next go-around of Measure H funds.
Okay. And, and the other thing I had a question about was the Ambassador Drive realignment. Had a conversation with a resident a few weeks back and, so I guess the school district, I mean, they're kind of, I want to make sure they're in agreement that this project as kind of envisioned isn't really necessary. That, I know there's been, there's supposedly something happened there sometime in the past, but there's no record of it. So we're just going to go with the lighting thing? Is that what we're proposing to the city?
That was the original feedback that they got from citizens. And so the, the city embarked upon preparing a set of construction documents to add lighting to that walkway. And those plans were routed to our district staff and we reviewed and provided comments. And, and part of that project required being able to tap into district electricity sources in order to power the lighting. It saved them money, it was a low-cost operation thing for us. So that was a win-win situation. But after those plans were nearly 100% complete, for some reason, they pulled it. They, they, the staff was directed to look at other alternatives, alternative routes.
To redirect it?
Mm-hmm. And one of the alternative routes was a route that took it off of the Ambassador Drive and down next to the live steamers complex between the Red Barn and the service facility for our park services. And it was very, there's a lot of traffic. We had problems with being concerned about vandalism to the live steamer facility as well as the Red Barn. It also happens that the day that we were making a tour with the city officials and the school district representative, it was very apparent of all the traffic and activity that was going on in the park services area with tractors backing up and moving around and sorting piles of mulch. And, and there was a lot of activity that made it clear that that wasn't the best alternative for alignment there.
All right, and I assume that redirection of the pathway would also incur more cost, right? If they're just not doing lighting?
That's true, there was another alternative that was discussed and that was kind of straightening out that existing pathway, which would require that we take down a concrete unit wall and rebuild a fence of some type to protect our park services compound. And so the lighting was the, had the least impact on both the school district property as well as our park services compound.
Okay, thank you.
I want to add briefly to this, that determined by the school district as well as the park district, part of the issue that the school district sees, and it's the same issue that we see, is the impact of these projects on staff time currently, which is something the, the board will need to certainly address probably coming into the new year. We, we don't have the resources, quite honestly, at, at our fingertips to continually respond to the manner that we've been asked to respond to Measure H projects. Now there's the school district in this instance. When we both sat at the table, we determined that this project was unnecessary. Having done the research on the last 25 years, that there have been no incidences in this corridor and that the original lighting project would have been sufficient. And yet still being asked to look at a redirection or repurposing or re-angling of that pathway when it truly wasn't required. So sitting across the table from facilities for the school district, we, we kind of determined that, you know, this, this doesn't make sense that we're doing a ton of work without any compensation on a project that we believe isn't necessary at this point in time. And that was, that was communicated, we had a representative from the city there. It was communicated to that representative. And, and also, also communicated was the fact that we'd be willing to go forward with the original lighting project that was on the table because we felt that was the best result. But we are coming on a number of these Measure H items where, quite honestly, we need another staff person in planning to handle the load of just the requests to look at these items, having not been in that process at the front end. So I was asked by another board member as early as today, is there a process in place? Currently there is not. We've already had the discussion with staff about remuneration for these, this type of work. And we're going to have to do that in earnest, a little clearer probably in writing coming into the beginning of the year. It really is having a significant impact on planning and we have our own planning work to be doing right now. So we will tackle that issue moving forward and just wanted to advise the board that we are going to look to you to help us craft whatever communication we would need to have with the city in regards to Measure H projects.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, let's move on to J2, which would be District Administrator's Report.
You have my report as submitted, I'm happy to answer any additional questions or concerns.
Chair Sloan, I have a question or concern. We've recently been asked by the public for different transparency and how, you know, how we do things and make sure we get minutes out and things like that. And I would just like to ask that Administrator Rodom's explain how we're going to work about that with our minutes and what, what is the best process? What is the standard process throughout a majority of the districts or cities? Or is it verbatim minutes? Is it, you know, what, what is the, what is the standard?
Well, let me, let me backtrack a little bit because I was, although I was out, or was I, I was on vacation at the time, I was receiving the emails and, and issues in regards to minutes being prepared, minutes being available, what is the time, timeframe, what is the workload? And I believe that the clerk really answered those questions quite succinctly in showing kind of the, the, the setup of, of what's going on and the impact of what's going on and the fact that we have a, a Department of One that really handles all of this information. And, and as we have rebuilt departments in this district, we will look to both HR and the clerk's office to kind of talk about additional support to help expedite this. But we do have a significant issue in comparison to many of our other counterparts in the fact that we continue to do verbatim minutes where most people are doing action minutes. And the fact that we are now visually recording as well as audio recording these meetings. And at some point in time, hope to move to some sort of, of software program that allows us to keep track in a better manner. The question still stands that verbatim minutes take and consume a significant amount of time to translate. So if, if you were to ask what the best current step would be, it would be to move from, from verbatim to action minutes to expedite that process and assist the clerk. It is a common practice, we're probably out of common practice in, in doing the verbatim. I know it was requested in the past for clarity. I believe that even at some point in time, a hybrid of both of these types will probably evolve to allow when there is special discussion to have more clarity in those and we can certainly adapt to that as well. But if we really want to, to expedite this workload, that's probably the best, most significant step we could take right now under the direction of the board if they choose to do so.
So Chair Sloan, I would like to have you direct staff that we move to that direction to help in some of these concerns that we have of moving to action items versus verbatim minutes. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's how I feel.
My personal preference for minutes is that they give some indication of the discussion, but brief. And verbatim is, you know, unnecessary really, especially with both auditory and visual recordings of the meetings. If anybody really had a, a question about exactly what was said and when and how, they could certainly have access to that. Strict action only is very uninformative when people go to read them though. I, I think when Mr. Rodom's mentioned a hybrid, that's, that would be my preference, would be where there would be, the public would have some idea of the discussion, but by no means verbatim.
Any other comments?
Yeah, so what do other agencies in the area do? What does the city do? What does the school district do? Does anybody know what everybody else does?
I'd like to comment on that.
Please do.
The city clerk has agenda software that produces her minutes as she's sitting in the meeting. So she can record the votes and her minutes are produced virtually instantaneously. Whereas in my process, I have to transcribe from the recording. I've worked with a lot of other special district clerks and for a while, everybody was swinging towards action minutes for the very reason that we're talking about this evening. Now they're starting to swing back towards the hybrid of having, recording the votes and some pertinent discussion. I would like to point out from a legal perspective that verbatim minutes actually open you up to more liability. Because simply recording things in writing opens you up for future comment, future scrutiny or future records requests, things of that nature. So, something to consider.
So I have a question. When we, when I was reading the minutes and I needed to, that, that statement that I needed to acknowledge, clarify, and most of the time, my questions are so that then they are questions as public that the public or our constituents may have, that we may know, but it's real important for us to ask it as they have asked us, so it can be explained, right? But like when I had to say that, that, that statement didn't sound right.
I think it's really frustrating for people because they're like, I didn't say that or that isn't correct, but as the clerk, I have to record it exactly as it was stated.
Okay, so, so the only reason why I'm saying that is go, we go through a process of approving the minutes. And when you see something is not clear, so then probably, then you don't, you want to make sure that you let them know that I can't approve it the way it is because this was, I need this clarified. So then we go through where we don't, we approve the minute the way it is noting that there was a clarification? As we did earlier?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and that will show up in the next meeting? I mean.
And in sort of piggybacking on that, if you do this sort of hybrid where you're not required, you know, to put in black and white every word that was said, it's easier to give a brief sense of the conversation where you don't have to get stuck on the word borrow versus access or, you know.
I agree.
And Danielle, you're, you're happy with the way it runs now or would you want that software?
I'm completely unhappy with the way things are run now. I'm a Department of One and I'm completely overwhelmed with the amount of meetings we've added throughout the year, not to mention committee meetings and PMRID meetings. All of these are agendized meetings and every time you agendize a meeting, you require minutes. And it's just not simply possible for one person to do. And the public is not getting the information and the timeframe that they should.
So the question that Director Sloan, I agree with it. That software that Mindy has, how, what is it? What, what will it cost us? Because it serves two purposes. One, it allows us to get the minutes out right away, which serves our constituents. But is it cost prohibitive?
Unfortunately, the system that Clerk Cuppy has is no longer in production. So we wouldn't be able to obtain the same exact service, but they are, they're not cost prohibitive. We would definitely like to look at that in the next fiscal year.
I think that's a great idea.
I think it's still important.
So would that software do the hybrid? Is that what it would do? Would it give you that flexibility to do it?
I would have to find out. At this point, I believe the software is mostly geared towards action minutes.
That's something that we can work towards, Jim and me?
Yes, actually, I've worked in organizations that have this software. At the time, we pulled in in, in brand-new Granicus. I'm not sure if that's the one that she's currently operating on. There, there are a couple of different providers of this. It is, I can't even remember the cost at the time, but I think it hovers between $30,000 and $50,000 for this, this software. It may have come down, I'm talking a number of years ago when it was last, well, I saw it last installed. But it is very efficient and the other good thing about it is it, it also times in with video. You can get that, that component, that you can actually go through an agenda and will bring up the discussion. People can go pick on, look through, through the minutes, pick up the discussion and pick it up on video if we choose to continue and time that up. So there's, there's some significant benefits to the public to, to have this and significant benefits to the clerk to be able to produce that in a timely manner.
So one more quick question. So were our minutes tonight using that software? Or was that your typing all of that? Because Mindy did, was, in your, in your absence, did our clerk work for us last night?
Right, Clerk Cuppy did not use the software when she was doing the minutes. She typed them as I'm doing this evening.
Okay.
Just to sort of eliminate a backlog, would you want to just catch up with action-only minutes and then revisit going forward?
We would be happy to take direction from the board on how they would like us to do that. We could certainly, certainly affect the action minutes now or try to look at a hybrid now possibly to see how that would work moving forward. We'll take direction from, from the board as far as how they would like us to proceed.
Danielle, would, so were you also thinking of possibly having part-time help to help you with this process?
I think obviously the software would be the first step because an employee would be more, have a greater fiscal impact. But eventually, I would love to have a deputy clerk.
So these are things we need to look into because we are getting busier and busier. And I, and I, I could see in your eyes that you're overwhelmed for what you do and you're doing a great job.
I want to, I kind of want to piggyback on that really quickly. We have gotten much busier as a district. You know, when, when Danielle sent out the message about the number of, of meetings that we add and the number of meetings that are agendized that require this type of level of service, it, it, it's evident that we've gotten busier. And strangely, we've gotten busier while cutting this meeting down to once a month. Think of what it would be like if we were still doing two of these a month. But the volume of what's coming in the packets, the other issue on being able to correct, to, to take, to take information from the management team, be able to correct that, send it back so they can correct it and then get it uploaded and done in a timely manner. You know, the, the issue on the fact that that, that time gets, starts to get compressed, you know, begs to the question of some assistance and of both, of multiple departments, not, not, not just, not just the clerk's department, but there is that need that we have in, in the district, which we'll look at. Danielle's correct in the fact. we'll look at. Danielle's correct in the fact that the, the first investment being the software is one of your, it's a, a short-term cost, but has a long-term savings as far as having an employee. And we're very, very careful about adding bodies to the structure as we move forward, and making sure that we have the work, we have the funding, and that we have the need overall. I don't think the fact that in this case, instance, the need is questioned. But, you know, we're gonna take it a step at a time as we move forward.
And we just, we added another, another notch for you to fill in, the ad hoc committee for two-by-two for the city, right? That's something new that you have to do minutes for? Yeah.
Well, I, I know that we can't actually take any action here. So maybe what we want to do is ask the staff to present a proposal to the board at the next meeting about how to address this.
Thank you very much. I'd be happy to do that.
Great. Wonderful. With that said, let's move on to item K, which would be Communications. K one Articles, Correspondence, Public Outreach. Any questions on that in the packet? Okay. Where am I now? Then I think we're at item L, Future Agenda Items, Calendar Event. Did everybody have a chance to look at the calendar? Anything they want to add to it?
Do want to mention that we are obviously canceling the December twenty-second. We do actually how, want to keep the January twenty-sixth. We want to come back and revisit the district mission and vision statements and start and kind of close the loop on that process, so that we can, when we launch the website, we have a new set of, of mission and vision that's incorporated in being able to communicate that with the new website load-up to the community. Yeah, it's, it's nice that I hear from the public that they're reading that information. The funny thing is, is as, as I noted when we were talking about this, the one word that drives me nuts is leisure services. The one phrase, for some reason, I keep thinking. I had a Canadian accountant when I was working in Lodi that kept saying that. I told him, please stop saying leisure services. It just reminds me of lounge chairs outside for some reason. So, so, you know, we're gonna update that. Once again, we've had that discussion. We'll bring that back around, close the loop on that, and, and get that launched with the website. So the twenty-sixth of January is the date we propose to come back around and, and finish that process.
And that's at eight-thirty or nine? What was it? What's established?
Eight-thirty.
Okay. Okay. Next would be L two, Regular Board Meeting. Next one would be January twentieth.
Sloan?
Yes.
I just wanted to inform the board, my fellow board members and staff, that I will be out of the country from the sixteenth of January through the twenty-third. So I will not be here for that board meeting. Just wanted to make sure.
Make that a note. Okay, with that, let's go into.
Chair Sloan?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I have an additional item for the January twentieth meeting, and that is the payday policy.
Okay.
I think I could give a really quick update of that. We're bringing to you when we changed, well, when, when we initially, many years ago, updated the admin leave policy. And the admin leave policy states that if you, if you're carrying over any time at the, at the end of the calendar year, you can be cashed out for no more than forty hours of admin leave for those people who have admin leave. One of the issues on admin leave, it's not something that we carry over and continue. So we, we provided that, that ability. When we changed payroll timing to, to every two weeks and to a twenty-six, twenty-six pay period system, it messed up the policy for cashing in. We want to cash in in January so that we have clean books going into mid-year, so that we understand our actual balances. Unfortunately, this year, it would have pushed that payment due to the policy into February. So what we're gonna ask is that we do a, do a quick change, just stating that instead of the last day of January, it's gonna say the last pay period in January, and update that system. Where that, that pay period, that payday is on the twenty-second, I do believe. You make the change on the twentieth, and then we can effect that change on the twenty-second. So I want to thank the clerk for bringing that up. I wanted to explain that quickly, so when we bring it to you, you understand it's just mechanics, really, of, of paying out that, that, that sum out of the policy that currently exists.
Okay. Well, let's see. Next would be L three, which would be CRPD Board of Direct, District Administrator's Calendar. Everybody look at that. See where Jim's gonna be coming up here. And before I adjourn, make a motion for, get for adjournment, I just want to make sure everyone has a nice, safe and healthy holiday season, the rest of the, the time off they're gonna get here, and a very, very happy and healthy New Year. And we'll see you again for our agendized meeting on the twentieth. But we'll probably see each other before.
So I'd like to move, I'd like to move that we adjourn to the next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Directors of Cordova Recreation and Park District for, on Wednesday, January twentieth, twenty sixteen, at six-thirty in the evening.
I have a motion to adjourn Director Reyes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Prime Minister Lineback. All in favor?
Aye.
A long meeting. Productive.